Okay, we'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, September the 3rd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Exman? I'm sorry, we have an old list here.
Where is he?
Here. Let's take it from the top. Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Chelka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Okay, got that done. Okay, moving on, would you please join us in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Okay, moving on to item one, agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved. A second.
Are there any questions or comments for the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item two is public comments. Anybody'd like to speak to the board at this time? It's not an agenda item. Okay. Three is years of service to employees with twenty or more years of service. Grant?
Here, we have several awards this morning. The first is for twenty years of service for Lori Runninghouse from the Health Department. Congratulations. Lori, we'd like to congratulate you too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You can even give a speech if you choose to.
Of employees.
And then another twenty-year award for Anita Wolf from the Treasurers Office. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations, Anita.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you can also speak if you choose to.
Well, it's been a great twenty years so far. I really didn't start in the Treasurers Office at the beginning. I started in the Recorder's Office, and then I went to Sheriff's Office, and then I started in the Treasurers Office in December of 2000. So, and this is where I wanted to be right from the get-go, then I had to get myself in the doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on to thirty years of service, we have Sandy Smith from the Recorder's Office. Here is she. Well.
Don't knock on her door.
I guess we'll move on to another thirty-year service award, Lori Denning from the Sheriff's Office. Congratulations to you, Lori.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lori, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Lori, you want to say anything?
Just spent a very enjoyable thirty years. To start off with Anita, I started out at the youth shelter and went to the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, for forty-year service award, incredible, and for somebody so young, from the IT Department, Kim Veder.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We didn't have computers then.
Well, I have to say, I started out in the IT department, but I started out as an operator, programmer, went back to school and got my computer finance, project management, systems analyst, GIS, and finally IT director, so.
Let's give applause, everybody. We want to thank everybody too for their service. Okay, then, moving on to item four, claims and payments resolution A. James?
I'm taking it yet today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
James is getting his feet wet here.
Total amount for the week is $476,101.87. Couple of the major items in that include, there's $107,000 for Mile Rock and Secondary Roads, also $45,600 for construction at the Gilbert Phil Shop, and then for the EMA radio system, there were a number of tasks completed for a total of little over $60,000.
Well, let's back up, Grant. We have somebody that showed up.
Oh, well then.
Usually the department head reminds the employees.
Sandy Smith, as we mentioned before, thirty years of service, so please come forward for your award. Congratulations, Sandy.
Thank you. Went very quickly.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very honored to work for Blackhawk County. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Like, say something, Sandy?
You know, actually, I would. I've had some very strong women before me. Ramona Williams hired me, and each of them have taught me something. She was very professional. She had a very good working relationship with all the Chinese in town. Patricia Sasse made me a deputy, and she was very dedicated to the employees of Blackhawk County. I learned a lot from her. And then Judy McCarthy was very, she had a vision, and she brought the office up in technology where we should be today. So, each of them taught me a lot of things.
Thank you for your service. Okay.
So we need a motion on that resolution.
So moved? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Okay. This agenda got set up with all old names, so.
I'll respond to Frank.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, now moving on to item five, receiving project updates from department heads and our elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I want to give a brief update on our contract maintenance work. Last week, or the past two weeks, Blacktop Service Company from Humboldt, Iowa, they've been doing our seal coating. We no longer do that work ourselves, we hire that out. And they just finished up last week with Watchburn area. We have received a couple of compliments on how that turned out. They also did Dewar and about five or six miles of other roads, so that is complete now. And they did a nice job. And then, lastly, Cedar Wapsi paving is continuing. It's started back up again. They're doing the intermediate layer for the next two or three days, and then we'll finish off with the surface lift, probably either late this week or early next week. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the new Veterans Community Center project. A couple of weeks back, we did perform a pre-bid meeting for that project. We had two local contractors attend that pre-bid meeting. We are currently in the process of working on just a couple of addendums that will go attach to that RFP. And then one other issue with regards to occupancy classification for that area, given the current, or the former occupancy and the new occupancy, we're working through the Building Department with the City of Waterloo on that, and we hope to have that tidied up and receive bids by the end of this month. And so we'll be coming back to the Board of Supervisors with those bids.
Has the items been removed?
Yes, on the interior, everything has been removed. As of last week, there were just a couple of items left in the garage.
The two playgrounds?
Playground are still there, and the last conversation that I had with the President of the Board for Green and Grow, that they were optimistic, there was a local church in the area, and they're trying to work with the Eagle Scout program to, work with them to remove that equipment. That was the last conversation I had. I'm not a hundred percent sure where that finally ended up, and we'll be reaching out to them.
Yeah, sooner or later, that's, they've had enough time.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. But for the most part, everything as far as in the interior and in the garage has been taken out, so, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll keep you informed as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item six, minutes approved from the 27th of August, 2019.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We do have a hearing we'll get to here shortly. Item eight is consent agenda, this be made with a single resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any questions on consent? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item nine, other business. This is a motion that the seal proposed by the county auditor be approved as official county seal to be shown on ballots used in Blackhawk County elections.
So moved. Second.
Right, you want to address this at all?
Yeah, I'll try to explain it. This is an odd situation that came up because of a law that passed last session in the legislature. For many years, the signature of the county auditor has appeared on all ballots, and some people thought that that gave county auditors an unfair advantage when they were running for election, so their name would appear elsewhere on the ballot besides where they were running. So the law was changed to take the county auditor's signature off the ballot and replace it with the county seal. And that would seem to be very simple, but for a couple of things. Number one, our seal has not, to my knowledge, ever been transferred beyond an embossment, one of those stamper things that you push down on a paper to seal it, and so we had to get it transferred to some, an image that we could print on the ballots. But also, across the state, counties were finding out that what the law actually says is, when it talks about the county auditor using a seal, it refers to a different section of the code, which is actually the part of the Home Rule chapter of the Iowa Code that talks about county treasurers. And it says the county seal will have the name of the county, the name of the state of Iowa, and the word treasurer on it in some form. It can be abbreviated. And so, County Attorney Brian Williams researched this, and we came up with a solution where we are approving this official seal, but it does not change the status of other seals being used by county offices, and there are just a few offices that use it, including yours. Your office uses the same seal that mine does. We'll continue to use those same seals for sealing documents, but this will be the official seal with the letters TR on it, otherwise it'll look identical to the old seal. And that TR will be the abbreviation for treasurer, which will make it legal. And chances are, the Iowa Legislature will address this in the next session and come to some sort of accommodation that prevents counties from having to jump through all these hoops, but in Blackhawk County, as with a number of other counties, we wanted to make sure that we were following the letter of the law. So, that's the story.
Very good. Anybody else got any comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item B is a motion direct county auditor to advertise for a public hearing, 9:05 on September the 17th. It's for a proposed ordinance 77-232 on a rezone on Elk Run Road.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item C is a motion direct county auditor to advertise for a public hearing. Again, it'll be Tuesday, September the 17th. Ordinance number 77-233, this one will be on Waverly Road, a rezone 5.1 acres ag.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And item D is a motion direct county auditor to advertise for a public hearing at 9:09, September the 17th. This is an ordinance, proposed ordinance change 77-234, and this is by Jim Bozier on North Butler Road, to rezone 1.6 acres.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to our hearing now. The time is 9:15. This is proposed FY20 budget amendment.
Most of the scene will place on file publication.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Motion to close the hearing, written or oral comments are received.
So moved.
Second. Were there any written comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And item three is a resolution that the FY20 budget be amended by changing previous revenues and expenditures on file with the county auditor.
So moved?
Second.
James, did you want to go over anything for the public?
Not much. What we're doing is we're amending the expenses that really were budgeted in FY19 going into FY20, so we're not actually increasing the expenditures, we're actually just transferring it from year to year, so.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions for James? Okay, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. And item K is a resolution, county auditor be directed to increase/decrease appropriations for various budgets for FY2019 and FY2020.
Second.
Any questions on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, this takes us to our work session. Item A is a discussion on the solar array implementation for several Blackhawk County facilities. Rory, you're going to be the speaker.
Yeah, we're also going to have Mike Henderson with Conservation State to give an update on their solar panels that they've just recently put out, Harp and Reserve. Alt multitasking here. Okay. All right, so first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to have this work session today. Solar's been a topic of, I think this has been in front of the Board of Supervisors in one form or another, probably this might be the third time, I'm guessing. Not necessarily the same information, but as a discussion. So I put together a real brief PowerPoint, I guess for the folks that weren't here when this Alternative Energy Committee was developed. I wanted to start off with that and just kind of explain how that came about. And so the Alternative Energy Committee was adopted back in March. The members were approved by the Board of Supervisors in that March 2016. Our mission as a committee, as it states, and we used our 2028 vision, this is extracted right from that vision, and I think this is kind of a key example of this committee getting together on a fairly regular basis, having this mission in sight. Number one, lead by example, learning from our own and others. Wanted to talk just a little bit about that, that learning from our own and others. Back at the beginning of this committee, we did reach out to Lynn County and Johnson County. In fact, there was a few of us that took a trip to Johnson County, and we had a very good discussion with them. They actually have solar arrays set up at their, correct me if I'm wrong, but their secondary roads site. Pretty impressive. We were able to gain a lot of information from them with regards to how they went about drafting an RFP, certain questions to ask potential vendors, that type of thing. So, that was very beneficial to this committee. We, I wanted to talk a little bit about the next sentence, the environmentally sound county assets, wisely investing in those. If you recall, and this might have been a couple budgets ago, but when you look back at what Blackhawk County has done just, say, the last five to 10 years, I think it's a great compliment to this board, especially with the energy efficiency in mind with the projects that we've done. For an example, new boilers, high-energy-efficient boilers, chillers, whether it's changing a process and how we do things, we've invested, the Blackhawk County has invested a great deal of time and efforts towards making our buildings more energy efficient. That was realized by a program that we worked in conjunction with UNI and the Center for Energy. Their students did a study looking at our carbon footprint, our carbon dioxide emissions, and we used a three-year period, and we actually, what we found is we saw about a 15% reduction in our carbon footprint, which was solely based on these projects that I've mentioned that this Board of Supervisors has approved in the previous years. To me, that's a, that's very exciting, that's a, that's a pretty significant accomplishment to be, to be proud of. So I just wanted to kind of start the conversation off on, you know, historically, the county has put great investment in, in looking at ways to be more energy efficient and to reduce our carbon footprint. Along with our 2028 Vision Plan, there were some specific goals that were outlined in there. Starting off, continued efforts for reducing energy needs for fuel consumption, again, kind of goes hand in hand with some of those projects that I've mentioned. Research the use of renewable energy for all county buildings. And again, these are goals, as this committee gets together, that we kind of guide us through our discussions. So again, back when we started our first committee meeting, you know, we talked about upgrading LED lights, which we did accomplish here at the courthouse. So it wasn't just, solar wasn't just the only topic of conversation, we did touch on other things, but we decided as a committee that solar was going to be kind of our drive to get as much information as we could about it, talk to our neighboring counties, and with the hopes of someday presenting this to the Board of Supervisors. So, again, that's why we're here today. Before I get on this portion, I wanted to invite one of our committee members, Mike Henderson. Mike, if you'd like to come up. Mike, they actually just finished a solar project over at Harp and Reserve, so before we talk about our carbon footprint and the impacts of what we're presenting here today, I thought I'd let Mike go ahead and walk through that. I'll get you started here.
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, Rory's kind of laid the history out, and that's a little bit of just three or four minutes that I've got on here with a PowerPoint, it's just how this whole thing got started, and we thought since we actually have a finished project within Blackhawk County, although this is very small compared to what some of these might be if we go ahead and move forward with this, the process to get to the endpoint is basically the same. And so, we thought we would just go ahead and show you what we went through to get the solar panels on the roof at Hartman.
Nope, that's not it either. I'm looking here. Should have popped up.
And...
We did test this before the meeting, so.
Yeah, we actually looked at it.
Where's our IT lady?
Celebrating their 40 years.
Quick, go for it. Since I got two going, that's probably, that's my file.
Okay.
If I pulled mine out, do you think that would help?
Is it this? Is this one yours, Mike?
Try that.
Yeah. It is.
Nope, that's mine.
Nope.
Let me remove mine. Try putting it in a different slide. Sorry about this, I thought it was going to go much smoother than this.
Yeah. I really didn't expect it to, because this is how things go for me. This is just about right down the alley for me.
Here?
Okay, thank you.
When was solar installed at Hartman, Mike?
We finished, what was the finished date on that? 30, July?
Yeah.
Late July. And we're not actually hooked up yet, we're still waiting for that permitting process to actually be turned on, and we have to, obviously, we have to be inspected, and we have to go ahead and be, and be turned on. They are in the process of running from the main
There you go.
power source or box in the building to the meter, and they've got to hook that up, and then they'll move on forward, and typically that, they told us it would be about four weeks.
Four to six.
Four to six weeks, and then they'll go ahead and it will be turned on, so. So, okay. This one. All right, so, this is the Hartman Reserve Building, as I said, it's a small project and that great big roof, you know, you might have thought that it was going to cover that whole thing, and that's it, right at the top. It's 24 panels, am I right, sure it was 24 panels, those are four-by-eight panels, and that's all that it took when they, when they did their analysis and figured out what we could put up there, and you've got to keep in mind, you cannot build your solar array larger than, than what you actually need. But what we did with that was we did actually, as it was installed, we can increase those panels. If our usage ever goes up, we add anything to the building, it's going to draw more power, we have the ability to add on, but this is as much as we could do with what was being called for, for the energy, the energy needs at Hartman. So, once again, the facility planning, you know, we had the energy efficiency building practices implemented, and that was just, and this was, this was well before this group ever sat down. We knew this was coming when they started raising money for Hartman, and so we actually worked with the Weed Group and Mid-America to come up with our, with our energy plans. And what we were looking for was what was going to produce, or what, what could our program be that would produce the most rebates to us? And so as you can see, we chose a, an energy rebate of $13,400. That was, that was what was worked into our system, and so as we went forward raising money, that's what we knew what, how we, this whole project would move along. The building itself was not a candidate for geothermal due to the location, the power facility, we'd had three phases in there, and, and that was necessary for geothermal, so that was a question that was brought up. Could that be a possible addition to the building too? And that's why it was not considered. The conduit from the roof to the electrical box, we talked about, you know, it was all roughed in when they built the building, we knew this was coming once again, so this made it a whole lot easier for when we finally made that move and, and were able to start this project and get it going. I talked about the size and the whole thing, we couldn't build more than, than what we already had. So, anyway, the alternative energy discussions began, and Rory kind of went through that. As you can see, he touched on the trip that everybody took down to Johnson County, and so I don't need to kind of go over the benefits, we all knew what the benefits were, we discussed those, and where we wanted to go, and the whole thing, and Rory came up with, or Rory invited the solar companies to meet with us and discuss the feasibility of the solar for our county facilities. Eagle Point did respond, I mean, was asked, you know, there were, there were others invited. I mean, was asked, you know, there were, there were others invited. Eagle Point was the one that responded. So we just kind of, as conservation, we knew where we were going. This was really good information for us because we were headed that direction anyway. So we just sort of continued with it, and we went forward. And then, you know, along that, the big, the big discussion was what do you, how are you going to pay for it? You know, there, there were several different options. And so we had to kind of decide how we were going to do this. Based on the fact that, that our solar project was a donation from a private source, it made sense to us to just go ahead and do an outright purchase, and that's what we did. So there, there are other options out there. Obviously, you've heard about those, and I know Rory's probably going to touch on those again, maybe. But anyway, that's why we chose what we chose, and it, it made sense to us. We did, did move forward then and developed a request for bid, as we do with everything else. That was very unique and, and kind of, that was a lot of, we put a lot of work into that. And I think Rory helped with that, and, and we came up with that. So we, we do kind of have a, some, some boilerplate stuff with that to move forward. And so we posted the request for bid on the county website, and three additional companies obtained packages. We sent those out to them. All in all, we had, what did we have? Seven? We had, we sent to seven different companies requesting bids. We, we did have a pre, a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and the only company that showed up was, was Eagle Point. So we went ahead and worked with them. We submitted, then the next step, once you get that, is you've got to, you submit the interconnection agreement and, and the application to Mid-America. You go through that. We, we scheduled the installation following receipt of the interconnection agreement. The array was installed actually on July 17th and 18th of this year. And then Eagle Point scheduled the electrical connection work. And then electrical connection began on August the 30th. Electrical inspections will be scheduled following that. The inspections can take up to a couple of weeks. And then, as we talked about, then, you know, you're going to get permission, they're going to be able to go ahead and fire it up, and we'll be able to start drawing energy from that. And, and once again, so the last step is to get the final okay from Mid-America, and that's, that, the installation from, from start to finish is about six to eight weeks. So it, it moves along fairly quickly. We did, I did mention this, but very quickly, once again, it was 100% donated from private funds. And we are actually working on with, an intern from AmeriCorps, they are setting up curriculum for educational purposes, and that was one of the big things for Hartman anyway. That's a very energy-efficient building anyway. We build it that way. But this is an educational component that we'll continue to use to educate, obviously, kids, children, adults, whoever wants to listen. And we are currently working with, once again, an AmeriCorps intern to set up curriculum to start this program, this teaching program. So we'll, we'll incorporate that into this whole solar project. So... I got yours up there, Rory. We put together, to get, sorry, can I...
The video?
Yeah, the video. We just need to go to the video. At the donor's request, I think it'll be the one I'm talking, at the donor's request, he wanted to put together a video. The installation is just about finished, so we're going to show the whole installation and talk about the installation of the city's business. So... So that's our little project from start to finish, and once again, although very small. And, and we do know that as we, we sent those seven bid packages out, we do know that there were a lot of companies that just, this is just too little. And, and, you know, I think that was part of the, the reason that no one else had responded. But Eagle Point has been very good to us and, and just there to answer questions for us at any time. And so we were very happy to work with them, and they were great to work with. It was a very simple thing to do once we got to that point. So, anyway.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, as Mike touched on, carbon footprint. So basically, what we've got here is looking at all eight, which, by the way, eight facilities is what the company Eagle Point that we worked with to gather this information. Eight facilities is what they kind of earmarked as our prime opportunity facilities. And so I want to go through the equivalence of the impact that solar panel, solar arrays would have on these various items. So this first column is just your total reduction in tons of carbon dioxide that would be eliminated from our footprint as Black Hawk County facilities. Pretty astonishing when you look at, I won't go through each shop, but if you look down at the total, that's 17,901. These are all projections. As I mentioned earlier, the, the three-year period that, in working with UNI, in that three-year period with the projects that we've done previously, we had about a seven to 800-ton reduction. So if you take this out for the warranted period of time, which is 20, 25 years, that's what they're saying this is the equivalent to. And that breaks out to about 700 tons a year reduction. So what we thought we were really accomplishing, which it was, a, a great reduction in carbon dioxide, we're achieving that every year with this project. Carbon dioxide reduction equivalent to trees planted. Again, as you look at these eight facilities, 417,000 trees. Makes my 19 trees of budget time look pretty, pretty weak. Reduction equivalent to driving miles reduced 35,802. Gallons of gasoline reduced 1,825. Tons of waste recycled, so taking it out to the landfill and what the landfills produce and then, and, and waste, we're looking at 56,558. Homes, the average home we'd be taking essentially, the equivalent would be 229, 2,029 homes. Pretty impressive. Pounds of coal burned, 17,483. Water, 436,594. So as you can see, with, looking at these eight facilities, does have a significant impact on the, the carbon footprint. I'm going to, I think all of you have met Eric Giddens, but Eric has attended many of our energy committee meetings, has brought a lot of very good information, information. In talking with Eric, he recently brought up a very good point as we go through this solar purchase spreadsheet. But Eric, if you got a, if you'd like to speak to, for an example, the potential or the increase in utilities moving forward and what some of our neighboring counties are, are looking at right now. So if you've got a few minutes, you can talk to that.
Thanks, Rory. Hi, boards, good to be with you this morning. Eric Giddens, Program Manager at the Center for Energy and Environmental Education at UNI. And I'm now state senator for the west part of Black Hawk County. So what Rory's alluding to here is the fact that we don't know for sure what's going to happen to electricity rates out into the future. You know, we have to do some sort of projection. We do these economics of payback periods and things like that, you know, to tell how long it's going to take to recoup the, the cost that you spend on an array like this, and the energy saved, and the dollars saved down the road. But it's just an estimate. So Eagle Point Solar, who put these financial forecasts together, did their best to be as conservative as possible with what they guess will likely be the, the rate increases out into the future. So they've used, I believe, around 3% as a projection, projected rate increase out into the future when they've done these, these financial forecasting. I just wanted to bring up the fact that Alliant Energy, which is the other major investor-owned utility in the state, we are not a part of Alliant's territory, we're a part of Mid-Americans, but we can look to Alliant for, you know, a case in what could be possible in the future. Alliant has just applied to the Iowa Utilities Board for a 24%-ish rate increase effective January 1st this coming year for residential customers, 24 and a half roughly. You're not a residential customer, I'm not exactly sure which class you fall into, but there are two commercial classes, one of which you would have to fall into. One of them is non-residential general service. That one, again, in Alliant territory, they were requesting an 18.36% increase effective January 1st. And then for large general service, 25.29% increase over the current rates effective this coming January. So I just wanted to make that point that, yes, I'm usually here to talk about the environmental impacts. I care deeply about that. That's why I do the work I do at UNI. But this is also hedging against some potential large increases in, in energy rates out into the future. We just don't know what's going to happen with the investor-owned utility rates. So if, I don't know if I've explained that clearly enough, but, you know, when you buy solar arrays, you lock in essentially what you're paying. You're then only going to pay a, a service charge for connection to the grid out into the future, but you're not going to have to pay for that electricity that's produced. You're just going to use it. So I think this is a great deal, not only for the environment, but also for the county's treasury. So I just wanted to make that point, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so as we go through, again, this is if the Board of Supervisors were to choose to purchase these arrays outright.
Could you enlarge that, Rory?
Yeah, let me see what, oops.
Yeah.
Again, so we're looking at eight facilities. Pine Crest, the Longfellow Shop, the main meter, Longfellow Shop Meter, their cold storage. Longfellow Shop Meter, County Conservation, their headquarters on Airline Highway. Mechanic Shop behind that headquarters, the Elk Run Shop with Secondary Roads, and the Sheriff's Training, their main center. Just a note on the Sheriff's Training Center, we did have Eagle Point look at some other facilities or other buildings that were out there. Such a low power usage, it just didn't, at this time, it didn't make sense to, to factor that in on this, so. So basically, how this is laid out, you have the cost of the array, and I'll show you a picture of what those arrays would, would look like. But then here you have your payback in years. It basically ranges from 14, just a little over 14, up to about a little over 16 years. So at the end of about 16 and a half years, all eight of these sites, we would be at a payback point. And keep in mind, there is a 25-year warranty on the system and a 40-year expected life on the system. And so the committee had asked if numbers could be put together on what the cash gained would be over a 25-year period of time, thinking that that would be the end of the warranty. So I'm going to go ahead and bump down. So if, that's broke out, and I'm going to send this to all of you also, but that's broke down per site. But if you look down here at the bottom, it's got the cash gain, taking those total sites into account. So it'd be $1,407,900. That's at the end of the warranty period. The cash gained over 40 years would be $3,249,189. Again, as Eric had mentioned, all of these figures are taking into account that our utilities are going to increase by 3.78% each year.
Have a wonderful day.
Any questions on any of that information? That would be 100% offset, give or take a few percentage. If you notice, under this post-annual project cost of $120, that's a fee that Mid-American charges regardless. That's, that's their connection fee to provide electricity to that building if and when we need it. And we would need it because obviously we don't have sun all the time. But the Iowa Utilities Board does require that any overproduction basically be documented and then returned back to us. So that's how this works, is, is it goes month to month, and it basically retains that amount of electricity that those panels are making. And then in the downtime, it grabs from that. It's called net metering. Hopefully I explained that okay. So that's kind of the breakout, and again, I'll send this to all of you. Trying to make this a little smaller here so you can see. And this, this wouldn't necessarily be, oh, not sure what that's doing. Okay. So that's how they laid it out. We, if this were to move forward, we would tweak this design just a little bit. For an example, to the east of the shed, we would look at these three sections being maybe put over to the west side. This is it right now, is currently the area where we pile our snow. And then if we ever have future expansion needs for that shop, we prefer to keep that area the way it is. But that just gives you kind of an idea of the sheer volume of panels that it would take in order to provide that facility 100%.
How far back does our land go there, just that trees?
Right, you see these trees right back here? That's about the end of it. And so if you had pictured a chain link fence obviously going around this, that would be something we would incorporate into that. Working with conservation right now, actually, several of these trees are dead. In fact, their conservation's coming out this week to take these trees down, so it's kind of hard to tell, but you can kind of see the tree there. This is the main shop on Longfellow. If you're going down, I guess Broadway there, you can see that from the road. This is one of their cold storages out back behind there. And again, these, these arrays were sized based on the historical energy used for these particular buildings. So they did go back, reviewed that historically, got the information directly from Mid-America. So that's all they're looking at, is they're looking at that meter and, and what is it produced or what is it consumed? And that's how they came up with these sizes or these numbers of arrays. That's another cold storage over at Secondary Roads on Longfellow. That's the Airline Highway, the, the main headquarters there. Conservation, sorry. Yep, that's their... Yep, that's their maintenance shop behind their headquarters there. That is Raymond or Alprun, Alprun. This is the main training facility, the shooting range. And again, that's the only building that we did. He does, Tony does have other buildings out there, but this was the primary focus, was this training center, it's the biggest user. As you can see, it's kind of like Harp and Reserve, you know, this, fortunately, when you build buildings like this now, you can go in and build them very energy efficient, so as a result, you're going to see less panels. So again, this committee was put together to look at opportunities such as this. This committee has put a lot of time and effort into working with these companies to gather this information and going out to other counties and gathering information from them. So I hope this provides you with something to consider. We wanted to get this in front of you now. Moving forward, if this is something you're interested with, the next step would be to develop an RFP, which Mike indicated, a lot of work went into the RFP, so we already have somewhat of a boilerplate in place for that. And obviously, this would be a public hearing situation. At the time that we last brought this in front of the board, it was discussed using, correct me if I'm wrong, but general funds or funds received or monies received from the sale of the Country View facility, that was kind of the discussion at that time. So that's the road that we've gone down.
It'll be up to the board to make those financial decisions.
And so I just, that's why I left it as the cash purchase price. We didn't get into a lot of discussion in the later meetings about the power purchase agreement portion. At the time, we did invite the Finance Director, Susan, to one of our last meetings and had her look through all the different spreadsheets, and she felt that the, given our situation, that the cash purchase was in our best interest to be able to see the savings sooner.
Does that affect our insurance at all, liability?
That's a good question.
Has your committee checked with BDCM on that?
I have not personally, but that is a very good question, I will do that.
The two questions I'd ask is, first off, does it affect our insurance and what does that mean? And then what kind of coverage we'd have to have and what it would cover, vandalism, active God with storms, wind, and things like that?
Absolutely.
So I think those are some things that you should check into to bring back to the board.
Do we have the numbers also when you talk about making that decision on whether it be a cash purchase or a purchase agreement?
We've got numbers that we had put together back when we started this. If you recall, we looked at including the courthouse and the jail, and we quickly realized that, given the amount of space that we had available, we can only achieve about a, correct me if I'm wrong, about a 17% offset. And so it just didn't, at the time, it wasn't very appealing. So we could revamp those our purchase agreement numbers with these eight facilities to see what that picture looks like.
Well, and it wasn't that I was disputing it, I just thought to give us some information, I guess.
Oh, absolutely.
It's the best way to finance it, or if we do want.
And just so you know, all of this that we spoke about back at the last budget in end of January, that, all that information should still be out on the server under solar project, too, so you can always go back and look at that as well. But I'll try to clean this up and give it back to you.
Is this planned all or done, or?
This, for these eight facilities, it's 100%, yes, to achieve 100% solar dependent on all eight facilities.
Who do you mean, is it all buildings or none?
Well, I've got some concerns on a couple of them up there, one, the Sheriff's Building for number one, the funding for that and so forth. But I mean, is it all of them or can we, the plan's not dead if we don't go with all eight buildings?
No, I think it's what we want to put in the RFP.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
I think.
But that's one question I have on that shooting, it's a different.
Yeah.
Sever from the county.
It really boils down to however we, like Chris said, however we put this RFP together. I will bring up one other point. I did reach out to Mid-American because we want them to be involved in this process as well. And I asked them specifically, you know, what we were looking at, what we were looking at proposing. One item of concern that they brought to my attention was the inverters. So you have your arrays and you have your inverters. You know, we talked about the warranty period on the arrays as being 25 years. The advice that I got from Mid-American was to ask about the inverters, and I did, I found out that those warranties were about 12 years. And so we looked at different opportunities to increase that warranty amount or that warranty time on those inverters, which it's very little cost to increase those up to match up with the arrays. But I think that's the benefit you have when you have that open communication with everybody, Mid-American, neighboring counties, is you learn that those types of things to look for, and ultimately, that results in a thorough RFP.
Why don't you get ahold of our representative from Mid-American and invite him to a near-future board meeting, so he can talk to the board about this and what our plans are and so forth. We had him here, I think, a couple of years ago, but I think it'd be beneficial we'll bring him back again.
I would just keep in mind that, I mean, they're, this is not in their financial interest.
Oh, I know that, I know that. But in this case here, what they just said to Rory about them, and then just some questions we have, is it going to cost us more if we're half on, half off, or, I have just some more questions, so why don't you invite the representative?
I can do that, yep.
So did you want someone to prioritize those buildings, or are you just?
Well, I just had some concerns on one of them, obviously, the one we said would never spend tax dollars out there, and so that's going to have to come out of a different fund. Is the sheriff willing to take it out of his fund for that? It's not a huge amount, but again, tax dollars weren't supposed to be spent out there. And then I think probably look closely more at some of the shops out there. I think the big project it looks like is going to be Pinecrest.
Yeah. Just so, let me go back to that slide, sir. When you look at the Sheriff's Range in perspective to the other sites, that.
About $9,000.
Yeah. $9,000 is the cost on that. When you look at Pinecrest, we're looking at $944,879 with the payback of 14.4 years. Cash gained over 25, a little over a million, over 40, about 2.5 million. That's just that one facility. You look at the carbon footprint, obviously, that one facility played a huge impact on this carbon footprint. Just alone, Pinecrest was 14,000.
That's clearly your larger facility.
So yeah, the Sheriff's, when you look at the Shooting Range in perspective with the other facilities, it is on the smaller scale.
Yeah, that was my concern, Rory.
And I think it's good to talk to the sheriff about getting them involved with the range, because they'd be, it'd be offsetting their utility costs already, so it's going to make sense for him, I think, and I think he's going to be open to that. Obviously, Pinecrest is where we have the biggest impact, both financially and environmentally, and so it's, I think, really critical that we include that, because that's where we've got the opportunity to save the most amount of money for taxpayers, but also have the biggest environmental impact. And as we look at, you know, what's happening around the globe right now, you know, the Amazon is literally burning down, but they've got a president that's descending into fascism, that's not really welcoming people into Brazil to help out right now. And so it really kind of leaves it up to local government around the country and around the world to make those differences, and we've got that opportunity here right now to really do something really spectacular that's going to benefit all your children with our grandchildren and, you know, generations. I plan on being here in 40 years when those panels go down. But I hope that we can say that we made those good, bold, smart decisions at this point in time when we had that opportunity to try and set ourselves up for a community that's healthy and sustainable.
Why don't you pass that insurance question on to the board, too, when you get that information?
I will do that.
And maybe you guys already have talked to him.
Any other questions? Well, again, I appreciate you taking the time and listening to us. I think this is an important committee for the, for Blackhawk County, and hopefully, moving forward, we'll continue to seek out ways to benefit us.
Was the committee, I assume, in agreement, total agreement?
Yes, they were.
For going.
Yeah. And again, we've invited Mid-American to those committee meetings. I'm sure they will have no issues coming to a board meeting.
They've been here before.
Yeah. So if you think of any questions in the meantime, please let me know. If I can't answer it, I'll find out a way to get an answer for you. But as of now, I'll get that information and get it back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rory.
Senator, thank you for coming today.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, then, so moving on, is there any reports or information from the board?
I just would, wanted to mention that the group, that ICIT group, that mentioned they were coming up to do the assessment, Kim mentioned, I think, about a couple of weeks ago, that they were becoming here to do the assessment, did reach out last week and just said, he was looking for some dates to come up and meet with the board and the department heads. He threw out two dates, I think, one was a Friday and one was a Monday, the 9th and the 13th. But I wondered if we wanted to get back, since it would be like a work session and have as many people as attend.
Is it on, are they talking a board meeting discussion or?
It would have to be just a work session, more or less, to have all the supervisors and department heads attend the first one, and that's really just to get the initial kind of plan. They go back then to the office, he puts together a team and then an agreement of what we want. So I didn't know if you wanted to do it at a board meeting, or if you wanted to do it on a Monday or Friday, makes no difference, but.
Well, we can do it at a board meeting, they're probably just going to give us a brief overview and.
Well, and I think, I do want to find out what we want, really, what works definitely from it and what we'd like to see, so.
Sounds good. Maybe he can in advance send some form of questions or something, or something that we can be prepared to ask or something.
I can ask, yeah. I was going to say, I think that's what he hoped to do at that first meeting, and then take it back and then write something up for us and then see if we're in agreement with that. But if he can do it Tuesday, I'll certainly ask. Otherwise, this Monday and Friday is always a day.
That's always good.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody else?
A brief update on the last Middle Sea River Watershed Management Authority meeting. We're really close to implementing our plan, but unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, and that's been an issue. And it's frustrating, because I know all of us here serve on different multi-governmental boards, and we take those roles seriously, and so it's kind of frustrating to see some of the other entities in the community not sending their representatives, and so this is their official public scolding. But we've got some important work to do that we want to move forward on.
Isn't my loss call for them to attend certain amount?
Yeah.
And they also may be available by phone, didn't they?
Yeah, it's available on phone and everything, and so.
They used to do that, so they said, call in if you need to.
So I know that's a frustration we all meet on some of these different multi-governmental boards, but I appreciate that the five of us all take those roles seriously.
Hey, also, I had some employees contact me and they'd like to have the board take a look at all our various committees, and they'd like to see more of us always putting department heads on there rather than employees within the department. And I said, you know, we certainly can take a look at that and see.
Or the particular?
No, just all of our committees, and, you know, we usually have two supervisors on there, but, you know, we have department heads who like seeing more employees on there that actually, you know, do the work, too. So we can take a look at those boards someday, too. Maybe now you can glance at them.
They'll be here before you know it.
And it wasn't any particular board, it was just all of them. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, with that, accept a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.